Test one, two. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. If you could rise and salute the flag.
Flag is to the flag. The United States of America, through the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Mr. Lemina?
Yeah.
Here, Mr. Loebz?
Yeah.
Here, Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Pelton?
Here.
Here, Ms. Pratt, the alternate member, is also absent. And Chairman Tucker?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First item on tonight's agenda is continued from the meeting of January 22nd and February 26th. Application of Jamie Ruano, 29 Carlton Street, requesting a variance with respect to the requirement that detached accessory structures shall not occupy more than 10% of the rear yard and shall not be located within the required side yards within two feet of the rear lot line to enable the appellant to construct a 20-foot by 20-foot pergola at 29 Carlton Street.
Is the applicant in the audience? Good evening. So, we did receive the new plan, and it was set by Site Plan Review did review it. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Do you have anything to add to us tonight? You were supposed to be bringing us documentation from the abutters.
I have the plot plan, and I have pictures, and I have letters from my neighbors. I don't know if I can...
Pressed a microphone just one time there?
No.
There you go.
Yep. Okay, I have the plot plan. I have a picture from the pergola with a measure from a fence to the edge at the end of the pergola, and I have a letters from my neighbors.
Anything that you have not already presented? That was all presented, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, you were... We left here last time that the direct abutty you were getting a letter from.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you have to present tonight?
Yep.
Do you have that with you?
No. Because I tried to talk with her, and...
You told us the last time that she was in favor of it.
Yes. I talked to her, between me and her, and she told me she'd be okay until we're not going to continue build anything else. So, I tried to reach her, and I couldn't reach. I went to her house, and she never opened the door.
Okay. All right, seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Seeing in here and out, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Okay, sir, if you would step back, and if anybody's going to come up to the microphone, they can do so at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Ann Popolo. I live at 20 Oxford Park. His property abuts my property, and it does not appear that there is a two-foot space between where he is putting up this pergodia and my land. When you look at my... I did send you a letter, and I emphatically said I was against it because it will block out all the sun. Also, my cousin... It's a two-family home, and the first floor is owned by my cousin, whose son lives there. And he's made a nice garden. I have been there for 77 years, and we've had a wire gate and fence around our property because I have a dog. And when they moved in a little while afterwards, they put up a six-foot vinyl fence, and there's maybe about four or five inches between where my land ends and apparently theirs. Since they put their fence up, my cousin's garden is just about dead. Now, he saw me one day in the backyard, and he asked me, "Why did I oppose it?" And I explained it to him. He wants to... And he told... Excuse me. He told me that he wanted to enclose it, which of course would have less sun for my backyard. He wanted to put a television set in there. House is less than five years old, brand new, air conditioning and so forth. I don't know why they need to have an AC... Oh, not an AC, a TV outside. If it wasn't blocking anything, be fine. They have parties, constant, and the music is on until 2:00 in the mornings. My bedroom is in the back, so I hear it. My cousin downstairs hears it. I explained that to him. I've never once complained to him about the music. You know, I just go with the flow. But this, I am adamant, I really hope that you can understand my point, that, I mean, I did say to him, "Leave it the way it is, or just put like a mesh so that we can get our sunlight from my yard," and looking directly into their backyard. And he does have the frame up. He never got a permit. And so, the property next door to him and where he has his setup, he told me he had to move it because there's less than a foot between him and his next-door neighbor on Carlton Street. So...
You're opposed to it, but you don't need to know about the noise problem, but you're opposed to it.
Yes, I am very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else that wish to speak? Counselor, do you wish to speak? Or you said you had your comments last time?
I did have my comments last time. Counselor Garino, so I award five. What's come to light is I thought, what we were told is that he spoke to the neighbor, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, he did not speak to the neighbor, and she is adamantly opposed. And by him putting up this pergola without getting the proper permits to begin with has created, you know, hardship on the neighbor who's been here for 77 years. And I can't put my blessing on it. I have to... I have to respect what the neighbor has to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if he's met the setbacks either, so...
He has not.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Members, do you wish to speak? I just have one. If you could step up to the microphone, please? So, this was... Okay, press the button. So, this was installed without any knowledge of the city, no building permits, nothing?
Correct.
So, then what happened? What did the city put a cease and desist on it and told you you have to come in front of the Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Okay. So, you already put concrete and all of that, and it's...
The pergola is already wrapped, it's already built. We put the roof, everything is pretty much all set.
Then why would you do that without a permit?
I definitely don't know if I really need a permit for do a pergola. If I will know... I do construction work. If I will know I need a permit to build a pergola, I definitely come over here and get everything, all the paperwork I require, the permits and everything to do in a...
And be in construction, you didn't know setback requirements?
We do two feet from the fence to the other side, and we do a... It's coming two feet and two feet from side to side. That's what we doing.
But you didn't know that that was wrong?
No, because I have a friend of mine, he does a lot of residential construction, and he helped me with that. And he told me, "We're going to leave it two feet away from the fence, from fence to fence. That way, we're not going to be in trouble in the future." But like I say, he never told me that we require a permit, and I don't know that, too.
Okay, any members, just to speak?
Yeah.
I do have to disclose, there is four members here this evening. We... So, we have a quorum, but one vote, it's denied. If we had a fifth member, it would be that you'd need two votes to deny. But in all honesty, I believe tonight that there is going to be more than two votes denying this because it was done without a permit. You're in front of us after the fact. So, if a member wishes to speak, please do so.
Yeah. It puzzles me without the proper structural engineer to say that this structure is safe and it not being permanent by or inspected by any of our city inspectors. I wouldn't approve this.
What is the wish of the members? Is there a motion to continue, or is there a motion to vote on it? So, that would be motion to vote? It would be a motion to approve?
Correct. The board wishes to, depending on what way the board votes, the question is always asked in the affirmative, okay? So, the question would be, shall the ZBA grant the relief requested? A yes vote would indicate yes that you want it to pass, and no vote would be...
And it would be subject to our conditions, so if you could just read that out, and then we could make a vote.
If the variance is approved, the following conditions would be attached to the variance decision. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant to this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. And the appellant must receive Site Plan Review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
No.
No. Mr. Loebz?
No.
No. Mr. Pelton?
No.
No. And Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance is denied.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Next application is A 2505. This is a special permit, continued from the meeting of February 26th. Samuel Teeka, 74 Dunn Road, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to expand the existing non-conforming single-family structure by constructing a 775-square-foot addition to the rear of the structure at 74 Dunn Road.
Good evening. Pressed a microphone for the... State your name and address for the record, please. Just lift the microphone up, your name and address for the record.
Samuel Teeka, 74 Dunn Road.
Okay. In our last meeting, we asked that you would present the plan to the Site Plan Review, which was done. We have a new copy that does show that the stairs are being moved back and that you have the exact measurements for the vehicle, so there's no concern with that. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I would ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing in here and out, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Seeing in here and out, I'll close that side of the hearing. Does the ward counselor wish to speak? Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Angela Garino, so I award five. I have no problem with this since they did everything they were supposed to do. I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's the will of the members? Motion to approve with the standard conditions.
If the special permit is approved, the conditions would be as follows. If the rights authorized by this special permit are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant to this variance, I mean, sorry, this special permit, the right shall lapse. This special permit shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this special permit and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. And the appellant must receive Site Plan Review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the special permit be granted for the relief requested? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to those conditions.
Thank you. So, you have to wait for a letter from the City Clerk regarding the decision made here tonight, okay? And then you'll read that, and it's just a 21-day thing, so make sure you read it, okay? Thank you.
Next application, last item on the agenda, is A 2506. Stephen R. Caruso, 320 Charger Street, Revere, Mass., requesting several variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to construct four townhouses on lots 22-346-5A, 7A, and lots 22-345-89, 90, 91, and 92, Ridge Road.
Is the applicant present? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Caruso, 320 Charger Street, Revere, Mass.
Okay. Do you wish to add anything to...
Well, I would like my head developer to explain the situation first. I have my engineer here, I have my builder here.
Okay.
And then after that, whatever comments they don't clarify, I will, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll set it up so it faces the...
Faces the camera up there? You'll be on TV? It will be on the camera? Where is it? Right there? You just want to turn it towards the camera there because that's going to come up on the TVs. Okay.
Hi, my name is Michael Gordon, and formerly of 14 Loomis Street, Revere, and...
Okay, you have to get to the microphone so that the audience can hear you as well.
And this is Brian Pomater. He's a surveyor, who is obviously involved in the project and understands the technical aspect of it probably much better than we do. So, I'm going to ask Brian to give a brief presentation of what we're... Why we're here, and what's existing, what we're proposing to do, and then I would like to speak afterwards.
The... It's usually only a five-minute speech, so if he wants to speak, just be... Just stick to the... What's there, it's... Okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
We currently have... We currently have six non-conforming lots. We're reconsolidating four of those lots into two larger lots on the northern portion of the site. In the southern portion of the site, we have two non-conforming lots. They're all vacant right now. It's a very hilly location. We propose to extend Ridge Road. Password is right now, develop it down. It's a currently... It's a accepted paper street. It's all woods. We propose to put four duplexes on these lots, currently designed down, propose, push the road down, gate off the end of the road, and then leave the remaining of the road gravelled for fire... So, the fire department can actually go all the way through when and if needed. The other end of that road is currently gated off at the other end for similar reasons as it is, for fire protection. What we do need is relief from lot area. We need relief from frontage, and we need relief from side setback on this. Minimal requirements for all, for each.
That was only a minute and a half. Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up a little bit about, you know, who we are and how we're going about this. You know, we did have a neighborhood meeting last week, and Mr. Agenzio got the word out, and we sat down with the neighborhood, most... A lot of people from the neighborhood, and we listened to their concerns, and were certainly sympathetic to their concerns. And some of these issues, we had indicated that as construction went along, that if those issues persist, that we would work with them. There was a fair amount of issues that might have had to do with the city itself and what the city could do for them. And, you know, if we're part of that neighborhood, I'm sure we can be another voice to help our neighbors. And we... The main reason why we decided on townhouses, I mean, those lots have been there forever, and there's a reason for it. The site work is extensive. And after looking at all the numbers, single-family homes just aren't cost prohibitive. So, we feel that the townhouses would be more suitable and would allow Mr. Coppola, the owner, to be able to recoup some of the money, 40 years of real estate taxes and so forth. It would make it worth his while, okay? And I had taken a list... I took a look at the list of the abutters, the abutters list that was sent, and I had noticed that there are 28 lots that contain either a single-family or duplex. There were 15 single families out of the 28, and there were 13 two-families out of the 28, almost 50%. And there was only one that I found that was a conforming lot for the two families. All the other lots were non-conforming. So, I really think we're not putting in anything other than what the neighborhood already has. Just getting back to Mr. Coppola, he has two businesses in the city. His family's had businesses in the city for over 50 years. He actually... That land was his whole family, and there was some day that he thought he was actually going to develop it for his family. But it just didn't work out because those lots are, once again, difficult lots. And Mr. Stephen Caruso, the applicant, owns a construction company in Revere, who's been here forever also, owns a site work division, and we have the expertise and the resources to go ahead and absorb the extensive site work that's involved. And with the duplex homes, we feel that it would be the best way to go. You know, we looked at things like a 40B. We looked at things, track housing, and that is certainly not what the neighborhood wants, and we certainly don't want to go in that direction. So, we feel that the townhouses would be the best. You know, I've done a lot of work in the city. I had four or five projects, 450, American Legion Highway 770, Washington Ave, Roland Road, and also on Anne Road in the last few years. So, my work is certainly known to the city officials. And, you know, when we went to Site Plan Review, when we were denied, we went ahead and met with... After that, we went ahead and met with Nick Reichstrom in Engineering, Paul Cheever, Fire Department, Frank Strangie, Community Development. We took all the proper steps to see what it's going to take to get these townhouses developed. So, these... A lot of these ideas are not just ours, especially the roadway. We had input from the city because we certainly aren't going to do anything that the city's not going to accept. And so, that is really the city's approval of the roadway. We still have to go the formal route, but it's from their input. You know, we also indicated at the neighborhood meeting that we certainly would be accessible. Not only do we have our businesses in Revere, but we're certainly not like some of these developers who come in, throw up a house, and you never see them again. That's not us. You know, I grew up, like I said, on Loomis Street, 14, and I remember being the only house in the street. And I said, "Dad, this is great. We're the only house in the street." He says, "Well, it's only going to be great for a while," he says, "because there'll be houses soon." And everything turned out fine. So... That's it. Thank you very much.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any other proponents? As a proponent?
Yes.
Once again, I'm Stephen Caruso, 320 Charger Street. Hopefully, to be the developer. I just want to state that we did have a neighborhood meeting, and we listened to all their concerns. There was talk about Suffolk Ave that floods, coyotes, street parking...
All we're here tonight is to listen to things relevant to the Board of Appeals. All of that is...
All right.
All of that doesn't matter to us at all.
That I appreciate it. That's what I appreciate very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other proponents? Seeing in here and out, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Avellina Adolphus, and I live at 197 Ridge Road. I just wanted to express some concerns. I would be pretty much neighboring these new developments. The hill is extremely steep. I really don't know how it's going to impact the area around. I'm worried about my house as well, that it's... If there is some kind of rock being blown, I'm not sure if we know what's underneath in the ground. I don't want the basis of my house to be endangered. The other concern is the street is extremely narrow, and as my neighbors can confirm, we've been struggling with snow plowing besides the street parking issue. And the new duplexes, as they are being planned, will not have any street parking whatsoever, only driveways. In regards to narrow street, there are concerns about ambulance coming through or Revere Fire Department truck. I understand the new approach and possibility of creating connection between both ends of Ridge Road, but I'm not sure how it will all work out. The lots are smaller than they're supposed to be, but I'm sure we all know that already. One last concern that I would like to bring up is I'm not sure how strong the street at the end is itself. A few years back, there was reconstruction of a water pipe underneath the driveway of my neighbor, and the people who were fixing that put some material at the end of the street. The asphalt literally kind of collapsed, and it was fixed with the most recent new layer of the asphalt being put on. So, just thinking ahead, if this development is approved, what can it... Excuse me, what can be done in regards to strengthening the street? That would be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone opposed? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Denise Center. I live at 187 Ridge Road. I am the third house away from where this construction would be. What I want to ask is I have a question first. Has the board or the zoning board, have you ever gone up there to look at the property? Because I think you'll notice the street narrows as it goes down into the hill, and that's where my concern is because of ambulances, fire, all those apparatuses that need to get down there. Sometimes the garbage men can't get down there. Sometimes the plows can't get down there. So, my concern is they tell us they're going to do tandem driveways for these constructions. Tandem driveways don't work. In general, they don't work. Usually, when the two people have cars, the person who needs to get out has to have someone else come up and move their car. Well, after a while, that gets tiresome, and then they park their car in the street. So, what I am talking about is the impact of parked cars in the street that are going to affect not just me, but anybody who lives on the street. If you notice, the other houses on the other side of the street, most houses were built in the '30s, maybe even the '20s. They didn't have to have driveways. So, the cars on one side... The houses on one side of the street do not have driveways. So, this is going to impact people who ordinarily park their car in the street, who are going to get... Eight times two is 16. You're going to get 16 cars in the street in that small space. It's going to impact everybody. And I will tell you also, in the wintertime, when people can't get down that hill, they park up the street because they know they can't get their cars up there. park up the street because they know they can't get their cars up there. It's a big problem for parking and plowing and everything. It's just my, my idea of impact on the neighborhood, not the general construction. But thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Any, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dimitri Di Gregorio, and I live at two-hundred Ridge Road. I'm the last house on the street on the left side as you're going down. And I own the lot next to my house. I've been there for sixty-five years. I've been through it all. And I just want to mention one thing. Around twenty years ago, construction on the duplexes had begun. They're all here now, they know. And I started asking the gentleman what he was gonna do about retaining walls, and he said, oh, nothing, everything's gonna be perfect. Okay. So then I came to the City Hall and spoke to the then-mayor, Tom Ambrosino, and told him what was going on. And he came, and they looked at these homes with the construction. And he brought along several of your, and Revere City Hall engineers, and they all said that this needs a lot more work, and on the retaining walls behind each duplex, and a big one in between two, two houses. So the builder said he couldn't afford it, and we had a look at these houses for fourteen months before that he had the money to do the proper job. And that's what, these people, I don't know what they have, what kind of building they're gonna do, but you need something in the middle, you need something in the backyard, there's a lot of construction, because there is water coming down those hills. And if you look at the bottom on Fennel Street, the water runs right through their yard, which is below my yard. And there's nothing they can do about it, because it's a, they told me that it is a creek or something up there that has the right to go right through their yard. And in the wintertime, everything turns to freezing ice. This is the problem with snow removal also, one of the biggest problems on that street, because it isn't really wide enough. It's on the bottom of Ridge Road now. And I'll tell you right now, they always look, the trucks don't fit down, so they go up the street, we'll see you later. Most of the time, they have to call the police station. And this is not a place for what the buildings, builders here have intended to do. And if they can build a single home with what the size of the lots are, fine, let them go ahead and do that. I have one other problem.
Is it to do with?
Not really.
The others?
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the other two problems have to do with something else. I'll see somebody in their office one of these days. But believe me, what they plan does not believe. Why don't you go up and see the lots?
I've been up there personally.
Because you know what I'm talking about, then?
To someone, yes. I don't know about the snow.
Well, I, so I live in my house, and if the, if they, say the fire engines can't come down, they can't, that's it. What do I do? What do we do?
The fire department will.
It's not wide enough.
The fire department would have to approve this before they even do anything.
Well, thank you for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Please, if you're, if you want to speak, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
It's open. Thank you.
My name is Sapo Chiapina. I reside at three-oh-four Suffolk Avenue, Revere. My kids' house is at three-fourteen Ridge Road, which is the opposite side here. I came to the zoning board back in two thousand, actually, yeah, two thousand and eighteen, I started, actually, two thousand and sixteen. I started the project for my kids. I didn't have enough land to have a two-family. The city required eight thousand square feet. So I had to go out and purchase another additional six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, which gave me thirteen thousand, five hundred square feet. Not only that, I took into consideration, once we got everything and we did it right, were huge retaining walls. I put in a two-car garage, a four-car garage for both my kids in order to make it adequate. So these people that live back there won't have to, because it's a very narrow road, suffer, okay? And not only that, I got my grandchildren there, and that's the reason I purchased that, because it was a dead-end street. And I, I had that lot many, many years ago. I think it's only fifty, wanna do it, you need eight thousand square feet. And you need retaining walls to a certain degree. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? In order to speed this up, if anyone else wants to speak, please step up right behind the person so that you can speak.
Hello, my name is Maya, and I'm the owner of three-fifteen Ridge Road, Unit B.
Jason York, three-fifteen Ridge Road as well.
Thank you.
So we are honestly really concerned by the fact of what kind of impact this street connection could make for us. When we purchased the home, we had no idea what we were getting into, and little we know, we discovered structural issues. So we spent over forty-five thousand to fix the foundation issue caused by construction. So all our neighbors on our side had and have the same type of issue. So at this point, even little movement can make a huge impact. We have a retaining wall behind our home, and honestly, it's not in a great condition. So if we connect this street, we know what's gonna happen, all other people will start building houses around us, and this will really structurally affect our home and our neighbors' homes. I don't know if you want, and, you know, and unfortunately, we don't have any greenery in Revere anymore, and this is the only green area that they are honestly trying to take away from us. If they really need to build something, perhaps maybe they can build like only two houses and build the cul-de-sac for the fighter trucks, but honestly, connecting the street is, is not a good idea. We also have one of the letters from our neighbors, you know, she, she also expressed concern. I don't know if you want.
Okay, is she here tonight?
She's not here.
Unfortunately, we can't accept the letter, because it has to be seven days before the meeting.
Okay, I understand.
Unless you were to hand it to the counselor, and the counselor wants to read it on behalf of the person.
Sure, okay.
Yes, okay?
Thank you.
And if I may just add, on our side, Ridge Road, every single house on the sloped side has a structural issue. So if there's a, you know, somebody who can check the soil, because there's, I don't think that's really meant, you need something really to support that, that side of the, of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Oh, can you press the button? There you go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Ikell, two-eighty-two Suffolk Ave, Revere. I oppose this project due to the fact that none of the lots confirm, conformed to the city's stated requirement for lot sizes. Two lots are seriously undersized by approximately thirteen hundred square feet. Further, the scope of the project is too big. If the standard lot size is what the city has deemed to be appropriate and reasonable, then it's logical to conclude that this project should not be approved as outlined. Approving this project will set a precedent that will be hard to overcome. I understand there, according to the developers, that some of the other homes up there have been given variances based on his figures, but also others have been denied based on this very principle.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Castellanos. I'm at three-oh-nine Ridge Road.
Good evening. My name is Eduardo Castellanos, and I'm at three-oh-nine Ridge Road.
So our main concern is the foundation. We have a problem with the foundation. And I think this will impact us even more. And at this point, if our foundation collapses, who is gonna fix that for us? That's gonna be a cost on our end. I don't think anybody else is gonna take up that cost. And I don't know how much to reconstruct a foundation is, but I'm sure it's not a penny. But I oppose to this as well. I think that we should keep our green, keep our dead end, and also for the safety of our kids.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm opposed against this construction, just for the sake of our kids that live in the street, either side of three-oh-nine, Ridge Road, sorry. And also because we, we have lots of wildlife, the retaining walls is gonna affect either sides.
Wildlife is not the topography of the land, so.
All right, sorry, skip that. Retaining walls are gonna be, the traffic that is gonna be in the construction is gonna affect the streets. The street that we are living right now in our side is completely damaged. If anybody walks on those streets, I don't think the city ever since they built that street has been any repairs on the streets. Drainages are sinking, nothing has been repaired. Heavy truck is gonna be maneuvering this construction, it's gonna damage more our streets. Who's gonna be responsible for that? The city's gonna fix it? Mr. Caruso is gonna fix that street? Are they gonna pay for that fixing it? The drainage also, the raining and everything, the snow, all the pressure is gonna consume to that Ridge Road, and it's gonna affect also Fennel Street. I don't know if Fennel is gonna be involved with that, but everybody that lives in Fennel are gonna have that pressure against them. And every time it rains, it's snow, all that pressure is gonna go against our streets, either in Fennel or in Ridge Road. So I oppose against this. And if that's gonna be the case, it's gonna be a construction that, how bad is gonna be the traffic? Terrible. So far, I mean, if you go down to Thunder Road, even if you take your, pee out of the gas, you're flying down. Down the street, in our street, we have elderly people, and we have retirement people at the end of our street, and cars are flying down, not because they're gonna fly down, it's because going down the street encourages taking impact going down the street. So I oppose against this for the safe order of road and for everybody else in Fennel Street.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Any other ones in opposition?
There's a letter of opposition on file from Sean Allen of three-oh-one Fennel
Does the Ward Council wish to speak this evening?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members, Paul Agenzio, two-forty-five Reservoir Avenue. I'm the Ward Four City Council that represents this area. I'm here to speak in opposition to this project, and my opposition certainly has no reflection on Mr. Caruso and, and Mr. Gordon. They're excellent developers. In my days with the DPW, I saw the projects that they worked on, and, and they're very good. And I want to thank them for having a community meeting. We had that meeting, about eighteen residents showed up, and they asked a lot of questions. And the result of that, as you can see, the neighbors here are in opposition to this. This is an old, established neighborhood, been, people have been there for generations, and this has a big impact on them. You've heard quite a few reasons why they oppose it. Parking, increased density, traffic, loss of open space, the water problem, there's natural springs up there, and there's constantly a water problem, and it rains down on the people on Fennel Street, and they're nervous about what this would cause. And another concern I have is the gravel road that's being asked by the fire department. As we know, gravel roads are susceptible to washout. And if you see where the gravel road is, to the north of that gravel road is a very steep incline. So I can imagine at some point, six months, a year, at some point, that will wash out. The city's gonna have to maintain that, and if it does wash out, it'll go down onto the homes down on Fennel Street into their backyards. Now, I have several letters here, and I just asked your indulgence, I want to read them into the record. They intended on being here tonight, but due to work constraints, they were unable to attend. The first one is from Kena Stokowski, lives at three-oh-four A Ridge Road. She opposes this project. I have lived in this neighborhood for the past twenty years, and I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed connection of Ridge Road to the other side of the forest. One of the main reasons my family and I chose this home is because it's located on a dead-end street. This provides our neighborhood with a sense of privacy, safety, and tranquility that all the residents greatly value. The lack of through traffic makes it a peaceful place to live, and it fosters a close-knit community. Additionally, I am deeply concerned about the structural impact that future construction could have on our homes. During previous roadwork, the increased vehicle traffic caused noticeable shaking of the stone brick walls around our property. We fear that this new construction or increased traffic could further compromise the integrity of these walls, posing a significant safety risk. The addition of a road connection would invariably lead to a substantial increase in traffic, which would further disrupt the quiet and safe atmosphere of our neighborhood. Many of my neighbors share these concerns and reaffirmly believe that maintaining the current dead-end configuration is the best interest to our community. I respectfully urge you to reconsider any plans to connect Ridge Road. Please keep our neighborhood's well-being, safety, character in mind when making your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration. Now, I know the fire department insists on the gravel road with gates. These people that have lived there were told that that road would never go through.
It's, it's not right, but now. It's not being, it's not presented in front of us. So hearsay, that's all I can say, is it's hearsay as far as we're concerned.
The fire department is insisting on that to, for, for this, that's what was talked about through site plan review.
Okay.
All right. The second letter is from a Mr. Matthew Smith, and he lives at two-forty Suffolk Avenue. I, Matthew Smith, could not be in attendance at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. However, as a resident of Ward Four, Revere Community, at two-forty Suffolk Ave, in close proximity to the zoning variance requests, I am writing to express my opposition to the newly proposed housing at the end of Ridge Road. I feel strongly that the proposed design is attempting to do too much with the available land, ultimately attempting to fit a square peg in a round hole. I understand the development group and landowner are trying to maximize profit, but zoning requirements are put in place for a reason, and these are the standards we should all be held to, no matter who you are or how much money you have. It doesn't feel that this is the case, considering ninety percent of variance requests were approved and less than ten percent were denied in the past three years. I urge you all to strongly consider not only the emotional concern raised by the citizens tonight, but also the actual logistic implications related to this variance request. Structural integrity to the neighborhood homes. Structurally, if ledge is discovered during the construction that requires blasting, there are no guarantees that any potential blasting wouldn't affect the foundation of my property and surrounding neighbors, not just during construction, but long after the developers have left and citizens are left to clean up the mess. Water runoff. The water runoff from Suffolk to Ridge has always been an issue. A water mitigation plan from the development has not been studied, or at least shared to the public. Tree vegetation, clearing of these plots will result in more water retention in that area, affecting the structural integrity of surrounding homes, existing retaining walls, and other infrastructure. The removal of vegetation will also impact the wildlife in the area, including coyotes, which already have, are walking through the neighborhood, giving them no place else to go. Parking and emergency access. There will be a parking shortage, one that signs alone won't solve. One driveway garage for a three-bedroom unit is not enough for at least two cars that each unit would likely have. Without street parking, where will these extra cars park? If they don't park in front of their property on the street, they will look to park in front of other properties, making it even more congested. Having cars parked on top of each other is not only ugly, but also poses safety issues for emergency response vehicles or other service vehicles. Where will guests park if not allowed to park on the street, especially during winter months when parking is at a premium? Space and design. There should be no reason to essentially squeeze these multifamily dwellings into a space of this size, one that is already narrow and crammed. While the design would look lovely in the appropriate setting, aesthetically, these will look out of place and not part of the community. The minimal frontage of the The minimal frontage of the lots will look like cookie cutter and make the area feel extremely tight during the proposed conditions. The developers put a great deal of thought into the design itself, but there are intangible considerations that the city needs to strongly consider, and the current residents know of these and are voicing their concerns. I feel there is a better ways to utilize this land without needing variance requests. However, given the current proposal, I say not here, not now. Thank you for your consideration." This letter is from Danielle Ortiz in Alberta, Ortiz, they're residents of 250 Suffolk Avenue. They're directly behind this proposed development. "I am writing in regard to Agenda Item 2506, the proposed development of four townhouses on Ridge Road. My husband, cousin, and I residents of property owners of 250 Suffolk Ave, which is directly adjacent to the project, and will be significantly impacted by the construction of two of the proposed townhouses. I am opposed to this project. Our home is situated at the top of the project area, and we are concerned about the potential impact that excavation on the land below. Our property was newly constructed, has a newly constructed four-foot retaining wall built in 2022, that was carefully designed with compacted gravel, dirt, and proper drainage. If excavation comes too close to this wall, it could jeopardize its structural integrity, as well as the stability of my backyard, which is mostly concrete with dirt underneath. Additionally, the water runoff from heavy rains is the ongoing concern. The driveway is already prone to rivule-like grooves from rainwater, and the sewer system is insufficient to capture all the runoff. The water flows downhill, impacting the properties behind our home. Noise pollution is another significant issue we face. Our home is situated near Route 1 and 16, where we are constantly exposed to noise from planes, trains, boats, and from early at 4:30 a.m. until late at night. The soot from the highway accumulates on our property daily. Despite the trees that provide mineral protection, if the trees are removed during construction, we will be left with no barrier to shield us from the ongoing pollution. Although it was mentioned that the tree line closest to our property would remain intact, I am concerned that the extent of tree removal will not be clear until excavation begins. Additionally, the local wildlife, wild cats, bunnies, coyotes, hawks inhabit this area behind us. The coyotes have dens along Ridge Road, and the hawks frequently hunt in this area. Any development would displace these animals and disrupt the local ecosystem. As a real estate professional, I understand the owner's perspective and empathize with the desire to develop the land, especially considering the tax burden associated with vacant property. However, I am deeply concerned about the lack of assurances regarding the safety of our homes. The potential for excavation errors or the impact of natural events could jeopardize the integrity of our property and pose significant risks to its stability. Thank you for your time and consideration of my concern. I respectfully request that these issues be carefully evaluated before voting on anything." Thank you for your indulgence, I just have one more. This letter is from 314 Ridge Road, Unit 1 and Unit 2. This is Christian and Vitale Krishnan, and Santo Chapina Jr., and Joey Ann Chapina. "I live at 314 Ridge Road, Unit 1 and also Unit 2, and have been a resident of the street for the past six years. Prior to that, I have lived at 304 Suffolk Avenue for 32 years. So needless to say, I've lived on Ridge and Suffolk for 38 years, and I'm deeply saddened and concerned about the proposed project to build on Ridge. This city has such an increase in traffic over the last several years, with building everywhere making it impossible to move around the city. I purposely chose to build on my land, as it is a dead-end street, knowing I can raise a family there, and my children will be safe to play outside, trying to replicate the childhood I was living on, on a dead-end street. The city is starting to drastically fall apart and take away from why people originally moved to Revere and wanted to settle families here. Being on a dead-end street and your proposed project would no longer allow for my household to have open windows for fresh air, my two children to play outside, and not to mention the massive disruption to our daily lives with building homes in our street. The uptick in traffic and building vehicles, the disruption to our homes due to high flow of traffic, and the filth to our properties due to the digging. We already have a rat and coyote problem, and the building will just displace coyotes, making them roam the streets and our property unsafe, as well as having disgusting rats on our property, causing a major health concern. As a longtime resident of the city, I am asking for you to not go through with the proposed building plan." So that's it for the letters. So just in closing, I think this boils down to, we have zoning regulations, we have zoning ordinances, and we should stick to them. We don't want variances to render our zoning ordinance irrelevant. So I think we should stick to what our zoning requires, and it's there for a reason, and I ask that you deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Some of that we're not taking into consideration, coyotes or anything like that, but I understand you had to read the letters. Okay, yes. There were two things that I have to state tonight. Again, there's only four members here, so normally with a body of five, you'd have two votes to deny this. Tonight, it would be one vote that would deny this, and we do have a quorum present. There is also one question on the notice that was given. It did not state that the council chambers. Everybody knows that they come here to the council chambers to attend the Board of Appeals. It would, I would ask if the applicant wishes to withdraw this without prejudice, ask for a continuance, or does he want us to continue and go on this tonight? So who is gonna get up and speak on that behalf? Understanding you're a developer, you realize that if it was denied, you couldn't come back for two years. Do you wish to work with the community, work with the counselor? Withdraw this, come back to us, ask for a continuance, or we can vote on it this evening?
Okay. The situation, which we already explained, this is the only thing that does work. Because of the major site work that we do have, and we understand all the concerns, we're not that hit-and-miss contractor that's out there. There was, there would be nothing, I appreciate that if we withdrew without prejudice, that we could come back at a later time and see if there's something that would satisfy the neighborhood. But under their concerns, we would just like to continue with your vote.
You'd like to continue with the vote this evening?
Thank you very much, and I understand the mix-up, but that's not a problem with us.
It's not irrelevant, I mean, you see that everybody's here this evening.
They all came to the right. At least they all came to the right address, because my office wouldn't hold as many people.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it has to do with this, just step, please press the microphone. Nope, press it on, it's not on.
Yeah, Michael Gordon, I just want to make it perfectly clear that, yes, we will work with the community, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, another resident just made it, he's in opposition, could he speak, or is that passed?
It's up to the board to decide.
It's up to the board to decide. Do you wish to have this?
He just got caught in traffic.
Does it?
They're good.
We've already closed it. Thank you. So the wishes of the council, the members here? Well, it's a motion, we would have to, a motion to approve without standard conditions, and then we'd ask for a roll call.
Again, board members, the question is always asked in the affirmative, so it's the board's wishes to motion to deny. If no vote will deny the project, then yes vote would approve the project.
If the variance is granted, the standard conditions would be as follows. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
No.
No? Mr. Lopes?
No.
No? Mr. Pelton?
No.
No? And Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, variance denied.
Having no further business, our next meeting will be April 23rd.